Call this meeting ordered. Sheriff Sanders, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is Jill coming in?
I'm assuming so.
Yeah.
Can you guys hear them?
Yeah. I'm gonna just go check quick if he's on the phone or something. Want to get started, where? You heard the fancy press? We met in the hallway. Alright, so the first item on the agenda would be the courthouse renovation project. I believe the subject would be just the approval of the bids, right? That's kind of the topic we're looking for. Sheriff Sanders, you got anything to add, or? Since you're kind of...
Good morning. Jim, can you hear everybody okay?
Yeah, we can hear you guys okay. It's a little bit, it's a little bit hard, but I can, I can hear some of you.
Okay. So yeah, the purpose of this meeting is to go over the bids. I handed out some information to you guys regarding the last email that we had with Comstock, indicating that there's a, another sub contract contractor that got involved after the fact that's willing to do some of the work that's not included in that page of contractors and the bids here for April 4th, when the bids are opening, and I guess Comstock wants to go over that with you guys at this point. So I'll turn it over to Comstock Construction at this time.
Yeah. My name's Olivia Yost. For those of you that maybe don't know me, and I also have Jalen Bauer on the line here. So what you guys have, should have in front of you is our bid tab and then our totals sheet. So I'll just start with that bid tab that has the different subcontractors listed and kind of just explain that. So, the first number that you'll see on there is the general works package. Comstock was the only one that submitted a number on that, which consists of a lot of miscellaneous general construction work. So that's our number there. The plumbing number, we have City Air as the one that we intended to take, which is kind of a topic that we need to discuss. As Prairie heating and air was the lower bid, however, on bid day, they did not acknowledge the addendums or include a contractor's license. So as Jalen outlined in our email to Sheriff Sanders, you know, we would not recommend awarding that to Prairie, but that is ultimately up to you guys to make that decision. The savings on that to go with Prairie is just over $40,000. So that's entirely your call. I don't know if you need to consult with your attorney, or if you, if you don't want to go down that road at all, that's, that's fine too. We have City Air's number plugged in for the plumbing and HVAC. They had a combined bid. And then the electrical number, Rafter Electric, was the low for electrical and the fire alarm. So that's the bid packages. Those were all read aloud on bid day. So that goes, and then we also provided you just kind of like a summary that goes through our base bid, with the contingency, our fee, and our design and pre-construction fee. And then also have the alternates number one and number two. That alternate number one is the train, the different train models for the HVAC system. And then that alternate number two is the ramp. So just, so you guys are aware of what those costs are for. And as Sheriff Sanders mentioned just a little bit ago, Comstock did go back and have some post-bid interest in the project on our general package. So at this point, we would be able to cut down $45,000 out of our general package. So that brings our revised total to $767,469. And I have a screen that I could share with you guys, but I'm assuming that you guys don't have the, you have a screen that you can look at if I share this or not?
Yeah, yeah, they got a team.
Okay, I will share this really quick, just so you guys can see. So as I mentioned, these are our bids. This is the concern number Prairie that did not acknowledge the addendum or send a license. We have followed up with them. Obviously, we wanted to make sure that this number was true to the requirements. So they have verbally acknowledged the addendums wanted to, but like I said, did not follow the bidding requirements on bid day. And then there's that savings that I have mentioned. Is there any questions right off the bat for either Jalen or myself?
Yeah, this is, this is Commissioner Magrum. The question I have is the, you said they didn't follow the addenda? What, can you just kind of briefly describe what the addenda is or what exactly they didn't follow?
Yes, so the addendums were, so an addendum is issued after the construction documents have gone out. So it's just some things that were missed in the original documents. Nothing that changed their number, but to follow the bid requirements, those need to be acknowledged. So addendum two included that alternate. We bid out that ramp as an alternate. And then addendum one, I believe, was a bid form change. Correct, Jalen?
Yes, and also in that addendum two, that's what we had asked for your guys' input on as far as putting that drain in the bathroom or removing the urinal. So the addendum would just be acknowledging that they know those changes were made. Correct?
Right, but none of those changes had anything to do with their scope of work, though, right?
Correct. It's still just not following bid requirements. It's a, it's a legal thing on our end. You have to acknowledge addendums, but it does not change their number. You are correct.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not trying to pick on you guys. I guess I'm trying to just, uh, break, because as a contractor myself, and so basically Prairie acknowledged every part of the HVAC, HVAC scope of work and just basically missed some procedural stuff as far as acknowledging other parts of the project, but they, they really didn't have anything to do with those parts of the project. So it's, I mean, for lack of a better term, it's more of a technicality or procedural thing, not, well, they just didn't know what they were doing. I mean...
Correct. Yep, it's a procedure.
Sure, I just wanted to be clear, kind of with, you know, not only myself but the other commissioners, that the, the part that Prairie needed to focus on, they did focus on and bid appropriately technically.
Correct.
Okay.
They had, they had plenty of time too, right?
Right, I mean, the timeline, I guess there was a deadline to the bids and they got it in before the timeline, so I, you know, as far as that goes, yeah.
Yeah, it was publicly advertised for three weeks, so, yep, it followed the public advertisement requirements.
But they got an advertisement state. In the advertisement states, it states no bid will be read or considered, which does not acknowledge project addendum. Fully comply with the above reference provisions, any of the deficit, deficiencies bid submitted will be resealed to the bidder. It'll be resealed to the bidder. Whatever they submitted, if they didn't comply with the addendum, is that correct?
I'm not hearing whoever's answering, asking that question.
I'm gonna use the microphone. This is the microphone right here, it's kind of...
But, but that helps, Dan, you speak into that mic.
It states on the advertisement states, no bid will be read or considered, which does not acknowledge project addendum or fully comply with the above reference provisions. Any deficit, deficient, or def, deficient bid submitted will be resealed and re-submitted back to the bidder? Is my reading this correct?
Yes, so when I opened the bid, I have to open the bid to see that it's not acknowledged. So I still have to open the bid and see that it is not acknowledged in the addendum, and I have to share that. Yep, so I do have to open it to see the bid form, to see if it acknowledges the addendums or not.
I don't think they had the license and everything up in front before they opened it up.
I guess, just to clarify one more time, I guess, or even kind of ask it's another question. So, basically, them not acknowledging the addenda puts a liability on you if you would recommend them as a contractor. So by you not recommending them as a contractor, it more has to do with just relieving you of the liability if we would choose to go with them. Your recommendation is that they didn't follow the rules, and so, like, your responsibility is to your liability of your company, and those are the rules you have to follow. That doesn't necessarily mean that, that hiring them on our end is some huge problem. It just basically relieves you of the liability because you're telling us that they didn't follow the rules. That's the way you would go about it. And is that kind of clarification?
Yes, yeah, so we recommend a bid that follows all of the bidding requirements. We're not going to recommend a bid that does not follow the public bid requirements, if that makes sense.
Right, and then, I guess, we're acknowledging that if we would decide to go with Prairie, it's just being acknowledged that you're relieved of any liability because you followed the rules. You told us how you thought it should be done. If we go another route, then it's, it's okay. It's just that your deal is you told us everything according to your contracts, your rules, your releases. Is that, that fair?
Yeah, that's fair, and like I mentioned, we did go back to Prairie and ignore, and discuss that their number is still good. So it's not that their number is not good for the work that they're going, that they would be doing. It's just the technicality part. So yes, you are correct.
Right, and I guess as far as the contractor's license, were they able to prove they had a contractor's license? Did you?
Yes, I believe that Christian, I have to check with our estimator, but I believe that that was taken care of as well.
Right, so that was more of just a, a kind of a no see on their part, more than anything. It's not that they don't have the proper licensing, they just didn't obviously include it at all or in the right position or something. Right, then that's basically what happened?
Correct.
Okay.
The other thing would be who's liable then if we take them? Are we liable, or are, is Comstock still liable?
I mean, we still would sign some contract with them, so we, we are liable to manage them. And that's why, like I said, we go back and make sure that they, after the bid, that they acknowledge the addendum so that we have all of our bases covered internally. It's just that we cannot make that recommendation, being they did not follow the bid requirements on bid day. If you guys choose to select them, yes, we vet it out, we make sure everything is good to go, and they are still subcontracted under Comstock, if that makes sense.
I mean, I, I think the point I meant by my liability was probably more towards the other contractors bidding it and just fairness and, and not so much like liability, like an issue with the actual workmanship, but more so that if Comstock accepted a bid that didn't meet requirements, one, the other contractor would probably be upset. Two, it might open them up to some kind of legal issue because they didn't follow their own rules. Now, if we decide to go with the bidder and ignore a couple of technicalities, I don't think there's probably huge ramifications to the work. It's just more so that Comstock can't, somebody can't come back on Comstock and go, hey, you didn't follow your own rules. They did. They're telling us what the rules are. If we're willing to do something a little differently, then Comstock is not liable for that breach of contract, whatever you want to call it.
I was just more worried about if they do the work that we're not, if they do faulty work, that we're not liable for.
Well, I, I think, you know, don't get too deep into it. I'm sure Prairie has more than enough, you know, adequate liability insurance, things of that nature, as far as Comstock being the general, that still falls under their purview with that. It's just that with us choosing them, Comstock couldn't get sued by City Air or somebody else because they broke their own rules. They, they're acknowledging that this was the rules they set, and this is the way they go about it. So it's more of a, just a fairness and bidding and things like that on Comstock's end, that rule.
Yeah, and for us, it, it's a reputation thing. You know, City Air obviously wouldn't be happy to know, you know, that their bid was thrown out. So would that affect us long-term in getting numbers from City Air again? So that's another, another piece of that as well.
So there shouldn't be any legal action, I mean, there should be no...
Well, in theory, I don't know if there's ever guaranteed that, but just that the theory is, is that Comstock is doing what they can so that way they're following the rules and be fair to the other contractors bidding the process. If we want to go a different route, then that responsibility is on us as far as, you know, if other contractors want to bid our work again or anything like that, obviously. But Comstock is doing right by the people that bid their projects so that they would want to bid them again, you know?
Well, it states a, a, a paragraph, two of them, it says Comstock Inc. And they got Linton County, which is Emmens County, reserved the right to reject any and all bids received and to waive any informalities and irregularities in the bidding. So it's kind of, we've got an open door, don't we, Joe, to decide who we want to go with?
Well, I don't think it's black and white, to be honest with you, so I don't want to hear, like, my answer. I mean, yeah, bids for public contracts are supposed to include, you know, the licensing information. It's probably oversight on Prairie's part because they've done work for us before, probably, I'm assuming, provided that information. But at the same time, if you look at what contents need to be in an advertisement for public contract bids, it states that they must state that each bid must be accomplished, or accompanied by a separate envelope containing contractor's license and bid security. That information's not in this advertisement. So if, if I was representing Prairie, I'd say, well, you should have included that right in the advertisement as well. So I, I, I guess, I, I think it makes it kind of a gray area, to be honest with it. The other part of that section is included here in the advertisement. And to your point, Commissioner Maturi also, you know, does state in there that they need to comply with the addendums. So I'm not saying that they didn't do anything wrong, might've missed something, but as far as, you know, what legally the right decision is, I mean, that would, that's probably a question for the court. I'm kind of right in the middle on it. I don't know what they would decide perfectly on.
So it's gray.
I do think it's a gray area.
Well, that's why I was wondering if they didn't have enough time to get everything in, or what the deal was.
No, I would, I would probably just mark it up to a, a mistake. I mean, basically a technical, whatever you want to call it, and either something didn't go through that they thought did, or they forgot to put that part in, something like that. I don't know. Stuff to speak for, and that's just an assumption, so I, I mean, I guess, I, I mean, my opinion, especially because it is kind of a gray area, I mean, I know for a fact Prairie has a contractor's license. They've proven it to several people after the fact. That if it's a gray area technicality thing, I tend to lean to a local contractor who's a low bidder by a significant amount. That's my opinion. I'm just throwing that out there because I, I mean, you know, we, we advocate for local contractors, and they are qualified. It's not like we're accepting a bid, you know, from somebody who doesn't have the abilities to do it. I mean, if it was totally black and white one way or the other, I can understand. I mean, for Comstock, it is because they have a different scenario than us, but, I mean, if it's a gray area, I'm probably gonna lean on the local contractor with a half dozen to a dozen county residents employed at it. That's gonna be the little bidder. That's, you know, and, and things like service after the sale and all, so those kinds of gray area discussions that you have where, you know, you might have a contractor come in and then now you're expecting these guys to come in and service it later. I don't know. I mean, those are, those are the things that I think about, if it's, if there is any kind of gray area, so.
If you're not comfortable going with that bid, I think you would also be able to reject all bids because you can reasonably, you can take in consideration monetary factors. Also, like what you said, as far as just getting maintenance done, that would be another consideration. And if you think reasonably that you're gonna save taxpayer money by rebidding the project, which it seems like would be, would happen, that would be another thing you could potentially do in a working bid after the bidding process. That would be maybe another possibility. So if, I guess, if I was the second bidder and I knew that that was a possibility, I think I would say, well, what are we gonna do, even if probably just bid it to, unless we were gonna lower our bid the second time and try to be competitive.
So you're saying that's probably the smartest thing to do legally?
I don't know what the smartest thing to do is. I'm just saying that even if we, if you weren't comfortable to take the little bid, I think that would be a, that would also be a possibility. I don't know what that would do for the timeline of the project, or if that's even necessary. It's just another avenue.
Well, and I guess that's the reason why I wanted to bring up the acknowledgement of the addenda, because it'd be different if they didn't acknowledge a change order on something to their scope of work. Since it's something that's pertaining to it, like myself as a plumber, I don't probably pay a ton of attention to the HVAC part of a project. And so I would probably have missed if there was a change to the boiler or a change to the electrical service. Because unless it had something to do with my particular portion of my job, I wouldn't pay attention to it, and that would be a pretty easy mistake to make. I, I'm kind of chalking it up to, it's, it's government work, it's, it's a, it's a bigger project, and so there's a lot of technicalities written into the contract. But does that change, you know, the fact that service could get provided by someone local and be just as qualified as anybody else? And if we're, I mean, let's just face it, even on fiscal point, I mean, they are the lowest bidder by a significant amount. I don't feel like we're doing anyone a disservice by going that route. That's my opinion. And then the second, your comment, if you reject all the bids, it's essentially with the intention that you're going to try and give your little bidder another chance to rectify the problem. So you're technically already selecting a bidder anyway, and if, if everybody else falls off to the wayside because they're like, wow, they're rejecting our bid and we're probably not gonna match that, you're probably gonna end up with the same result anyway. So, I mean, that's why I feel like going through that process would be, I mean, I, I just, I find it hard to believe you run into some legal trouble over something as, as simple as a, as a misunderstanding of contractor's license. Like, I feel like that's a, just a really strong technicality on something. It just would be, it would be different if they hadn't provided it, and then when you asked them to, they couldn't provide it and they weren't qualified. That would be an entirely different discussion. But I, I feel like, I feel like if you want to talk about gray areas and decisions that need to get made, it'd be when it comes to trying to support local, especially local businesses, if, if they aren't qualified. I think that's, that's definitely something that comes into our decision making more than, than Comstock Construction or something. Their job is to do best by their contractors and their, their employers, whoever they are. But with us, there's, I mean, especially as a small local area, so. I'm just throwing that out as an opinion, right? Whatever you guys wanted to say.
I will add, on the, I believe I heard someone mention rebidding, and I would just strongly advise against rebidding that portion of the work. One, due to the timeline of the work. I know people want to get this going and get started. And two, the likelihood that others would submit bids again is probably pretty slim, knowing the situation. So I would advise against rebidding. The other thing that I do want to point out is that if you were to take Prairie's number, you still have to have a plumber. Well, your low plumber is also City Air. So we have not had a conversation with them about splitting their scope either. So if they come back and say, you know, it's against the bidding requirements, then you're looking at your next low, which is higher, a higher number. So that's another item to consider as well.
But they submitted individually, and they submitted the plumbing and the HVAC together. So what would...
Yeah, they submitted separate bids and a combined bid.
Yep, and multiple, yep.
What are you saying? They probably won't take the plumbing, and you know what I mean?
Yeah, but that's why they did.
Well, to, yeah, to Commissioner Maturi's point, they did submit a separate bid for the plumbing, which, I mean, in my opinion, like I said, going back as a contractor, they looked at trying to be the low plumber, low bidder on one or the other and combining. So that's where I, I mean, I would, I mean, the likelihood of them still wanting the plumbing seems there. Otherwise, I don't think they would have bid it separately, but that's also an assumption. That's not, there's no fact to that, so.
Yeah, that's as simple as us just having a conversation with them, so. Just wanted to point that out.
Would they have to honor that? Wouldn't they have to honor that bid if they were low and they submitted it separately? Or am I wrong in thinking?
Yeah, they have to honor that number. It's on the bid form. Yep.
Okay. But they could also reject it, right? No.
I, I think they would have to honor that number.
They have to honor that.
But they could pull out of the project.
Right, check. I don't think there's any obligation they have to do the work or say that they, and they could pull their bid. So I don't know. I, we're kind of getting, yeah, definitely into a gray area. I, it's, I don't know. I guess, like I said, I just envisioned walking down the street and somebody going, how come you didn't hire Prairie for that work? I heard they were a little bitter. Well, they didn't submit a contractor's license. Well, you know they're contractors. Well, I, they didn't submit their, like, I just, what would the reaction be from some of the locals when you told them that that's the technicality you kept from the local contractor? I think it would be, I'm just envisioning that as my, and like I said, that's not a legal technical analysis. That's just me as a county commissioner going, we have a project in town, we have a qualified contractor to do it. I, I understand they missed some steps, although in my opinion, minor. The, the part that they need to be doing, they did, and I, I wouldn't have a problem with taking Prairie as a little bit. That's, I just, for that sake, I'm all right.
So where do we sit then if they deny or reject their bid and pull out of here City Air? On the positive side? Then we go with the next bidder?
Yeah.
Which is a hundred grand higher, right? No, not quite, no.
Well, I'd look at it, the way we'd be looking at it, the, the second bid would be, would be topple on their plumbing number, right? If we would go with...
Fifty grand higher.
So then we're, we're ten...
We're ten grand, they...
Ten grand, right, and grand down again. And that could be very easily happen. They could pull out, say, we haven't got the whole project, we're not gonna...
Yeah, but that's definitely a possibility. There's no doubt about it, actually. And that's where...
This is bad. What's with these alternate number one, O1 and O2? What do those signify in those columns? Can you explain that to me and us, or maybe it's just me?
I, I'm sorry, I cannot hear whoever that was. I didn't catch that question.
Yeah, on the, on the bid sheet, you've got alternate number O1 and alternate O2. Those numbers in those columns, what do they all signify? Just for clarity.
Yeah, so alternate number one was that different train model of the, for more heat capacity. So that was alternate number one. And then alternate number two is that ramp, that front ramp, exterior.
Yep, okay. See, it's just not spelled out clear what it all is about. I go along with you, Eric, with that as far as local. I mean, yeah, I want to support local. But if they pull out, we're negative 10 again? So we're, yeah.
No, I, I, I completely understand that. I, I, it's a, that's a...
You would think that they wouldn't overlook something like that when they're in the business.
Yeah, well, I mean...
I usually think they do that every day, but yeah.
I'm like brushing your teeth in the morning.
Yeah, so...
I want to do what's best for the county, but it's just kind of rule.
So I guess another question that might pertain to this is, so where are we at with the bids versus the actual budget? Like, are we, are we quite a bit over budget, or are we, or how, how is that looking as far as where the bids came in versus like the contractor estimate, or?
Hey, can you explain to me where the error was that you people bid as the general contractor being Comstock, that after the bids were opened up, that there was a $40,000 error on your part? That you caught, so that the main bid that you submitted as the only general is $40,000 less? I don't understand that. Can you help me on that, Ken?
Commissioner, I don't, I don't believe there was an error. I think what they said in their email, which is in front of you, is that after the bid letting was done, other subcontractors come forward and said they could do some of the other work. And they can clarify what they were, it might be sheet rock work, it might be some of the demolition, you know, not the specialty type work. And that's what they're talking about, the extra $40,000 savings from their number, is that others have come forward willing to do some of that work. Correct me if I'm wrong?
That's what it is?
That is 100% correct. So we submitted a bid on bid day, and we had bids come in afterwards to us for some other scopes of work that provided this savings.
Okay, okay, because I didn't understand that. Just where did this come about? Okay, that's all I needed to answer. Thanks.
So I guess we're back on the question of just even where the budget, where the...
So, let me find my information here, something.
Yeah, so the previous budget that we provided was about, let's see here. The one on January 25th that was submitted was $649,408. So yes, we are over budget from that previous one. I know that there, I've been on the tour of the lease, so I don't know all of the things that were added, but I do know that there were some scope items that were added from this previous estimate as well.
Dan said some of the budget stuff too, yeah. So their previous, as she indicated, their previous estimate... their previous estimate was six forty-nine, six hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and eight. And after the bidding process, some of those bids come in higher and so forth, which again, that was an estimate which is subject to change and so forth. Uh, but getting back to Commissioner Magrum's question about budgetary issues, when we started this project, uh, commissioners, there were six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, five hundred and twenty-six dollars, uh, of ARPA, federal ARPA funds available for this project. Uh, of that, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars, fifty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, uh, was delegated for the improvements up at the Hazelton County shop. And that left a balance roughly of five hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and two cents left in that, that line item today. Correct me if I'm wrong, Marla?
Right.
Okay. So there is a shortfall. And that's, we all kind of expected that, that may happen in this project. That's why previously we had to cut some of those, those progress from this overall project to try and stay there. But we're still over that, that dollar mark.
So it's close to a hundred thousand, right?
Yeah, about a hundred and six, a hundred and six thousand if you went out the estimated, you know, the contractor estimate. And yeah, if you're looking at the current bid, it's uh...
Right.
It would be, well, cause if you look at the construction, the construction subtotal after the bids with the contingency, the management fee and pre-construction and design, it's got here at eight hundred and twelve thousand. So that would be, if we would accept the, the high bid or the low bids as Comstock suggests, plus with the contingencies, design fees and everything, it's eight, twelve, four, sixty-nine. Right?
That's what City Air's number is.
Right, exactly. That's what your suggested bid recommended. That's your bid recommendations, not, not something any different. So if we just took what Comstock accepted as the low bidders and with all the other fees and everything that were part of the contract, it's actually eight, twelve.
Which is quite a bit short.
So you're looking at, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand.
The other thing I think to take into consideration, um, it, it's not major, but again, when you look at that page two of the bid package, the three percent contingency fee, the six per ten, uh, six percent fee, those numbers are subject to change because again, if you go with the low bids, that number lowers along with that percentage lowers and so forth. But at the end of the day, yes, there's a shortfall of funding for this project to do what we want. We already had to cut some of the projects that, that maybe weren't higher priority. But the projects that we're going forward with today are things that we felt we need to get done. Um, you know, or, or it isn't going to get done.
Well, and in, in fairness too, the point of the, uh, of Comstock finding contractors after the facts, if you, if they were to go that route and have that thirty to forty thousand dollar savings, it would be more like seven, seventy-two, four, sixty-nine, roughly. I'm just, and so that would...
Yeah, if you see my screen, I have that on here. So we would offer forty-five thousand, so it'd be a seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine.
Yep. That's what I had, roughly, so.
Yep.
So I mean, so you're, you're looking at a two hundred thousand dollar shortfall from the ARPA funds to what the scope of the work is that we want done, um, in the bid project. So, I mean, so I guess getting back to the root of the conversation is, if we would accept Prairie's bid and forty thousand dollars cheaper yet, and City Air were doing plumbing yet, you would see, you would save forty thousand dollars. If you go the route where you end up accepting a different bidder because you took City Air, a different bidder for the plumber, you'd be increasing it ten thousand dollars. What my point is, is you would have a better chance of lowering the budget by still accepting that lower bid. I mean, if you're two hundred thousand dollar short, I mean, another ten thousand is not really a deal breaker. But if you could save forty thousand dollars, I, I'd be that, again, coming back to taking the local guy and stuff, that's probably a risk worth taking because if you're, if you're talking about percentages, you have a better chance of saving forty thousand than losing ten. That's just, again, my own opinion. That, none of that might even be the case. I just, again, I, I will get down to the root and I'm going to advocate for the local guys. I am a local guy. I feel locals should support locals. That's, that's just where I'm coming from on that. And I, I've worked with Prairie enough to know that they're qualified to do the projects. They're probably the people we'd be coming to work on the thing five, ten, twenty years from now. I, I, I feel like, in my opinion, I could overlook a technicality or two, to support a local contractor. That's, and looking at those numbers. The other question we'll also have to ask ourselves is if we decide to go any of the routes, where are we going to find the additional funding? That's the other question. Cause we're in the neighborhood of two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand short of, obviously, like I said, the ARPA funds are, the term free money is a foolish term, but we'll use it in this sense. It's money we did not have to levy for. Um, we'd have to come up with roughly two hundred thousand-ish in order to make this work. And maybe even a hair more, cause there's maybe going to be a change order down the road, something we don't even understand. So, so you might as well figure two hundred and fifty thousand, no matter which way you go about it.
So we've got to start cutting out some.
Well, you're going to have to, have to cut something out or you're going to have to pull money from a different fund. Um, you know, as far as availability from things like courthouse maintenance or, you know, there's the opportunity to probably take some from the permit fund.
Fifty-two grand striking on these little highway stretches, no shit?
Well, I mean, there's things like that you could take from other funds. I would advocate for the renovation of the courthouse because these are, these are renovations that have gotten ignored for decades because they were so expensive. This is as close as we're probably going to get, uh, as far as not having to use all county funds. The opportunity to do it again is, is slim to none. And we know what it's like to ignore a structure. I mean, it just, all the way around. You ignore it, it only gets worse. It doesn't get cheaper. It doesn't get easier. So I would, I would advocate to, you know, figuring out what it would take to match those funds and make this project.
Karen Magrum, it does, the, um, I have a question. That eight hundred and twelve thousand, does that include the ramp then or not?
Um, so the question, just for Comstock too, was the eight hundred and twelve thousand, which is the original number you submitted with the bids, that, that, did that include the concrete ramp on the?
No, that is alternate number two.
Okay. So with alternate number two at the bottom, the, the total would be thirty-two thousand, two thirty-six. That is just, the additional cost is thirty-two thousand, two thirty-six. Cause you did get a bid submitted and you had technically accepted it on your end?
Yes. That, that is the number for that ramp, that alternate number two. Yep. That would fit according to contract documents.
Right. So if you were to accept the, the ramp too, it would be an additional thirty-two thousand?
I would make the recommendation that I think that ramp really needs to be done. It's going bad. It's, it's, we got to be ADA compliant in this courthouse. I would make the recommendation that we declare it an emergency and we do this project and pay it out of the emergency fund. That's my recommendation.
Well, cause I guess another question that did come up is I think you were actually maybe warned that that ramp, if it's not brought in some better compliance or replaced, we could lose our, our loading or pulling place eligibility? I mean, so that does come into question where, you know, I, I mean, a project this big, I mean, a ramp like that needs to be maintained. We got to have handicap access to this courthouse too. So, I mean...
And the only one is to the north.
That's the only one. That's the one that's...
For clarification, what they're talking about is a handicap accessibility ramp by social services.
Yep.
And we need to maintain that to be ADA compliant and to maintain the courthouse as a loading pull place with the state. If we don't maintain that, we lose, we could lose that ADA compliance and not able to use the courthouse for a boat, or a loading pull place. So, and I agree with, with, with the conversation here. Uh, we, I believe too, we need to try and keep this local if we can, uh, support those local contractors and the families that work for them. Uh, and overall on this project, we did cut some projects like I said before. Uh, we cut it down to what we felt we could cut it down to, to try and stay within the budgetary, uh, process. Uh, but what we're looking at here is, yeah, a shortfall of roughly two hundred thousand dollars. But with the federal funding that came into the, uh, into the county, we're still looking at a seventy, a project that is funded seventy-five percent, if not a little bit more at the end of the day.
We do road projects like that all the time. I think the courthouse has earned its turn. That's, I guess, I, that's just my opinion. I, 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 you know, advocating for spending is never fun. But, you know, somebody was the bad guy down the road that advocated for building this courthouse. Somebody was the bad guy for advocating. And then twenty, thirty years later, everybody gets to enjoy that, you know? And I, I think it's, it's our turn to, uh, to make that tough decision to maintain the structure that obviously people went through some tough decisions to decide to build this thing. And now it's been here, go out, it would be absurd.
Absolutely. And the longer we kick the can down the road, we're doing some of these, these repairs. Uh, when you look at the front landing of the courthouse, the main doors, when you really stop and you look at that, they're in horrible shape. They're cracking, they're splitting. That, that slate out there is, is in very poor condition. That's got to get repaired.
I was going to ask on this, eight hundred and twelve thousand, is any alternate one and alternate two not in there, not in there?
No. So that, the eight hundred and twelve thousand is the base bid for the, the decisions that that committee and us that looked over and said, those got to get done. The alternates were, were options that, you know, if the bids came in way lower, you might be able to still do them. Or if you did do them, you'd have to find funds for it. But it was...
So alternate two was just for that ramp?
Alternate two was just the ramp.
Alternate one is what?
Alternate one was, uh, like an upgraded heating system, some kind of a, obviously a bigger furnace, boiler, whatever. I know when she said trains, train, that was, I'm assuming the brand you guys spec or something like that? And then it was, yeah.
Yep.
So that basically alternate one was a, was a upgrade to the furnace system, heating system, and alternate two was the concrete ramp.
So what we got in the, the general bid then was, is that good enough for, like that, alternate one, is that mean that specs qualify or whatever we need to have in there?
I, I think the idea would be base one is, is a satisfactory heating system. Alternate two was maybe some kind of upgrade or recommendation from a contractor, an engineer that, hey, you could do this too, but it's going to be more expensive, right?
So they can bid the lower end or the high end? How do they do this?
Well, you could, you could, you could bid the minimum essentially, what has to absolutely be put into the courthouse. But there was a better option that wasn't necessarily, it didn't have to happen, but it would maybe be a nice upgrade or a good alternative. And so they bid it separately. So we could go, hey, do we want the better furnace boiler? Or do we want just what would be enough to make everything work? And I don't, I don't even think that some like option number one is bad. It's just that...
We want to be on the edge of it.
Well, do, do we want, do you want the, uh, do you want the Ford or the Cadillac version? That's essentially kind of the idea.
I'm going to express myself, maybe I shouldn't.
Speaking of microphone, Dan, you lead that too, Mark.
Um, I'm going to express myself, and it's nothing in reference to this, but yet it can be. It's what I read in the Bismarck Tribune, maybe a month ago on the front page, with the correctional center of the state, where Comstock was the general contractor, and there were subs and there's all these issues. So when these companies bid these subs, these projects, they can bid it on the low end or the high end. And how do we know where we stand at the end of this deal? Are we going to have issues like what happened up there or what they're dealing with?
I'm not here, I'm sorry. Whoever that is, I, I did not hear.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that a little bit, just because I'm in the know. This is Jason. I apologize. I had to, I have another meeting, so I jumped on a little bit late. But the issue at the, the jail was basically in, um, it's an adhering issue in the shower. And we repaired that, and it's a hundred percent repaired. And the showers are, it just, the paint, the epoxy paint didn't adhere into the shower. And we think it was maybe a spec issue, like maybe the product that was spec wasn't right, but that's what we're trying to work out. So, um, the county is completely satisfied. Their jail, their showers work. Um, now we're just trying to, to compensation issue at the end. So to answer your question, we do our best job to, or do jellies to vet through the subcontractors to make sure that they bid apples to apples, that everything's meets the plans and specifications. But unfortunately, once in a while, there's an issue that comes about. And I mean, we, we stand by it. We make sure that the county is whole at the end, that they have a facility that can be used. But that's, that's kind of the issue that happened there.
Okay. I just got it cleared. I just, yeah, to clear my own personal, thank you. Thank you.
Yep. Well, and I, I guess to, to piggyback on that same thing, I guess that's another, I, I guess another checkmark in my mind for Prairie Heating because we know, I mean, most of the people know them, the people that work for them, the service after the sale issues going on. I feel like, and this is no insult to any other company, they probably are all outside. It's not a criticism, but you know, sometimes, a lot of times, you just go with who you know. And I, I feel like it would be, I think it would be a wise decision to go with Prairie Heating. I think they take care of it. I think, I think that kind of issue, if that was a concern, that would maybe put some of those to rest. I, that's just my opinion again on it too. So, uh, but one other thing, I guess, more of the question for Marla, the auditor, do you feel like with a possibility of utilizing some permit funds, if there was an opportunity to use some emergency funds for some of those, you think with the combination of maybe several funds, we could come up with the difference to be able to make this?
The permit fund could be utilized.
Right. There's, there's going to be some room where we could, we could...
The other thing I was thinking of, the capital improvement fund, but then we'd have to raise the mill at this fall.
Right, but we do, we do, we do raise some funds for courthouse maintenance. We could use some of them funding.
We use fifty thousand in there, but last year it got, got spent. We did work on it and stuff.
But I mean, depending on even what some of the work is done, we could maybe hold off on other work to help with this one. I mean, I, I feel like we would have flexibility in a couple of the other funds.
Use a permit fund, we could do that. And then I, I, you know, like I said, the emergency fund, I think we should do that around.
Sure.
It's less than one meal. We did, we had a good winter. We didn't have any winter storms or we had to declare emergency for snow removal or anything. So I think we should, this is important too.
Well, I think the fire, the HVAC system, all of that, I mean, to bring it in compliance for a public building, we could utilize that. So, I mean, just in your opinion as the auditor, but...
I would say use the permit fund.
Yeah, but we would have some flexibility and some of the funds be able to make that work. Cause I, I feel like this is the closest we're going to get to remedy some of these major issues. So I, I, I think with some fund, fund flexibility.
It's long overdue.
It, it needs to be done.
Yeah. And I would reiterate, this isn't just to make things look pretty. This is to do some repairs. Our fire alarm system is highly inadequate. Uh, this place will burn to the ground before somebody opens a fire here in this building after hours during the weekend. Uh, that definitely needs to be upgraded. These steps need to be upgraded, that ramp. These are things that have to be done. And we kicked that can down the road for decades, and it needs to be addressed. We've got over five hundred thousand on the table from the federal government to help with this project. Uh, I, I feel too, it really needs to go forward at some point. And after conversations with Audrey Marla, oh, how's her, I think the funding is there. It's just a matter of shuffling some funds around, try and make this work. Uh, cause this is, uh, I, I don't know what we'd ever have an opportunity like this going forward to try and get this thing done.
Well, and I can be honest too, just with the, I probably shared the idea of what we're doing with dozen to two dozen people. Only the one person felt like what we were doing was, you know, and we're going to upgrade the bathroom, we're going to upgrade the fire system, the HVAC. Like you said, it's not like we're building a monument out front to some thing. It's, it's, this is the nuts and bolts of the building. I, I hadn't talked to anybody that felt like, hey, that was a good, that was a bad idea. I mean, everybody felt like if we're going to use those funds, fixing something that's probably going to last twenty, thirty, forty years for the day-to-day operation of this building is, is a good investment. So I, I would say for the sake of time and for everything, uh, we probably need to look at, I mean, if you're not comfortable with one part of it, I mean, there's other contractors like the electrical and stuff. I mean, that's pretty clear cut there if you want to go for approvals on that, or if you want to make a broad sweeping motion to accept all the bids or whatever. But we should probably move forward with it. And then also just remember if you're accepting these bids, then you are kind of accepting the number that goes with it. So as far as budgetary...
I still have a question on alternate number one. For forty-six thousand dollars, what more would you get? I mean, are we getting a quality product?
Maybe, maybe Jason, uh, you could address Commissioner Everly's question regarding alternate one. What, that involves the HVAC system or the heating system, correct? What, what specifically is alternate one?
Yeah, I'm going to do a little, uh, do more investigation into what you all get for that. But I think what you approve or not approve today won't affect that. But I'll get a, what, to my recollection, what it is, is it's upgraded to a, a different uh, brand of a system. I think train is, no?
It's a train system. It just has more heating capacity.
So are we going to...
It's a different model of this same train system.
Well, that's, that's sort of getting it. I mean, if we, if we take the general low bid now and we don't take alternate one, is that going to be sufficient for what we need for this building?
Yeah. So the engineer would design it as base bid to be sufficient for the building. The alternate is just an upgrade that is better system. It's not that it would not be a sufficient system in the base bid. the alternate is just an upgrade that is better system, it's not that it would not be a sufficient system in the base bid.
If you guys would like, we can get the engineers, um, kind of a download of it or narrative of it to share with you guys, so they can kind of explain that to them, 'cause that was a recommendation from the mechanical engineer that wanted to put that as an alternate, so if you guys would like, and it wouldn't necessarily affect anything today, moving forward, we just have to decide when we write that contract to that subcontractor.
That is quite a bit of money.
Well, another clarification, Prairie Heating bid the alternate, uh, about twenty thousand lower than the other accepted bid two, right? So if you were going to go with alternate one, the low bidder is also the low bidder on alternate one too, so if you maybe have some concerns on that, that's another, I mean, they are, I mean, the bid you're looking at is for them to accept the lowest qualified bid, where they're saying that Prairie is disqualified in their opinion, and that's the decision we're making, where, like you said, another opportunity there would be, if you wanted to go with alternate one, Prairie again was the low bidder, so.
There, yeah, Prairie Heating's alternate, uh, option was ten thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars.
Yeah, more, okay.
Yeah, that, so they, they included an alternate for an upgraded system, and in my recollection, uh, I think when they had the walkthrough, Jason and you guys were here with the subcontractors, was, the discussion was, well, what if we have four hundred people in the auditorium? Use the current system, so those were part of the decisions made, I believe, in that alternate that, okay, versus we normally have anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred and fifty people, and what end did we have an event with this far? Four hundred people, in my opinion down there, it's too many people, uh, it's, it's just too many. Um, but they wanted to include an alternate, worst-case scenario, uh, four hundred people, it's thirty below zero, uh, or same thing in the summer for the air conditioning system, again, four hundred people in there versus two hundred people in there, is.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, absolutely, but that was part of that discussion, I think, in an alternate. What, just take a worst-case scenario for heating and air conditioning, and if we have to put a bigger unit in, Prairie Heating's bid was ten thousand more to do upgrade that system from their, from the basic system. I think most people would, you know, when you look at the events that have been down there over the years, uh, whether it's a four-H fundraiser, uh, and so forth, that's really never been a problem. In the old days, when they had firemen's balls down there, and you had three hundred people down there, yeah, you got hot. I don't think the air conditioning system would probably keep up down there. Um, they have the same problem with the other buildings, systems, you have that many people in there. So that's part of that decision, and another option is worst-case scenario.
Something else to consider, if that alternate number one is more efficient, the money saved over time would more than make up for the extra expense.
That, that, that too, there's a very efficiency difference.
Is it gonna be more efficient or not, I don't know.
So a question for Comstock, just to be fair, is if, if we would wanna upgrade to alternate one, do we have to make that decision today?
No.
I mean, that's something that, in the course of the project, if we had the funds to do, you could, you could accept that alteration or?
We would have to have that decision before we issued the subcontract, just because it's, I mean, they have to order this unit, and it's a different model.
Right, so it's, it's a totally different unit, it's not just like an upgradable component or something like that, to be clear, this is a whole other model. Yeah?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, even in regards to the electrical and the fire alarm bids, there's like a ninety-five thousand different, ninety-five thousand dollar difference between those bids? Am I hooking up this right, correct? On twenty-six A and twenty-eight A between Rafter and Steels?
Correct, yep.
Ninety-five thousand dollar difference? That doesn't even seem possible.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of things to consider too, I mean, that's what we, you know, I mean, as a contractor too, maybe perhaps one of the contractors is a little more desperate for the work, maybe they're, have a different project similar in the area, they can conserve mileage or, you know, components, things like that too, I mean, there's a, there's a lot.
I realize that, yeah.
Or what is your concern, that one is too cheap, is that maybe they, they misbid it, well, I.
Well, as long as we get the quality.
As long as we get the same quality product, I'm fine with that.
Well, I think in these cases, when you have a bid package that's this specific, most people that are bidding it probably understand what they're getting into, so if they are significantly lower, that, uh, I mean, that's, I mean, they're bound by their bid, so if they're taking on the work with that bid and they accept the work and we accept the bid, then I guess, uh, that's, I, I don't know, I mean, like you said, you, you pretty much just have to take them, that they know what they're doing, and whatever they have figured out for this project, they, they, they've cut costs somehow, or they've combined it with similar jobs they have in the area, something that made them more competitive than someone else who maybe doesn't have a job in the area, so they're kind of going out of their way or something, so I, I would say, uh, I would say there's probably not a lot of concern with that, so.
Yeah, one of the first things that we'll do, depending on the decision today, is, you know, we'll be having meetings with these low, these lower accepted contractors, just to make sure that there isn't any scope gaps or anything that they, they miss, so we'll let that out, but.
Okay.
We feel comfortable right now.
And they should all, it's all the same quality material, right?
Well, I mean, they're bidding the same project, I mean, yeah, there's, there's code and specifications, so yeah, I would say it's gonna be light and kind on almost everything, other than, you know, whatever's, uh, you know, contractor discretion, so, uh.
They've bid it high, they'll get it fine, yeah.
I mean, another thing to just kind of reconsider too, is, I mean, with the competitiveness of Prairie's bid, you could actually go with alternate one and still be, you know, a little bitter or quite bitter, or, you know, so I just, again, it's, uh, it's basically coming down to your comfort with the technicality, if that's, if you're comfortable with, you know, going a different route, there's, I mean, you could actually accept the alternate one with Prairie Heating and still be very competitive with the bid process, so it's, that's where I just.
A lot of it's all legal, and we're all okay, no legal recourse.
Well, I don't think there's a guarantee, no legal recourse, but I just, I feel like we're doing right by the taxpayers, by going with the low bidder, we're doing right by our locals, by trying to do as much local business as we can, I, I feel like the only outlier is that it's a technicality on somebody who maybe doesn't bid these types of jobs like these other guys do, and then made a mistake that would probably never happen again, so, and you're gonna hold everybody alive along that, I mean, that's, I'm not trying to throw a guilt session, but that's basically the decision you gotta make, I.
Well, we said right away, we'd like to hire some locals if possible.
I mean, you're talking about a company that employs a lot of people in the county, does a lot of work in the county, uh, I just, that's where it fits a gray area. It'd be different if they were not the low bidder, and you were looking over people specifically because they're low, I think I'd have a problem with that. When you're looking at, it matches the budget, it matches our own little personal, hey, we'd like to get local people in here, it matches all those things. The only technicality is a piece of paper too, that, if they could've done it over again, they probably would've got it right. I, I feel like I'm willing to overlook that to do right on all the other parts, that's, that's my opinion, but, uh, we should probably have a motion on this, you know, and, and move forward, I guess, if so, 'cause that's the whole point of having a special meeting, was to get this going, so we can get the project going, so we're gonna have to make some kind of a decision, so. Um, I guess if you wanna make individual motions on each part of the project, that's fine, if you wanna construct a motion on all of them, we're just gonna have to be specific on, the, the one, first one would be obviously accepting the general contractor bid, accepting the plumbing bid, accepting the HVAC bid, and accepting the electrical bid, and then, and the fire alarm bid, and then also the, uh, well, I guess the electrical bid, like, if we were accepting Rafter, that's a combined bid, so that would probably combine, but then the other thing is whether or not you wanna accept the base bid, alternate one, alternate two, I mean, those are, so maybe you wanna go through individual, that way we don't get too, too wild and then miss something or miss say something, so. Somebody wants to make some motions to accept some of these, uh, would be preferred.
I guess I make a motion to accept C D Air for the car and plumbing.
Okay, so Commissioner Miller makes a motion to accept C D Air Mechanical for the plumbing portion, is there a second to that?
No second.
Seconded by Commissioner Everly, is there any more discussion on that? Not hearing any, I hope those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So C D Air Mechanical's bid for the plumbing has been accepted, is there a motion for the general contractor?
I'll make a motion for that.
So Commissioner Everly makes a motion to accept Comstock's Construction's general contractor bid?
No second.
No second, is there any more discussion? I guess the discussion I would have on that is since that, are we accepting the base bid or alternate number two for that one? Because there is a, there is an alternate for that bid.
Take it out to include the ramp too.
That would include.
Yeah, alternate two.
Alternate number two would include the ramp, base bid would not include the ramp.
Right, right, right.
So did they have to know bid alternate one and two today?
Yes, they, they need to, well.
Correct?
Alternate number one, it would be good to know, yes, but we can certainly get you guys more information, like Jason said. Alternate number two, you would not have to decide that right now.
Okay, well, then I guess, so we don't have to change the motion, if you wanted to just accept the base bid, and then we can kind of mull number two over, if there's different options or something, or. So we have a motion and a second to accept the base bid from Comstock Construction for the general contracting, is there any more discussion?
Well, I mean, uh, should we put alternate number two in for sure?
Well, that's what they're saying, we don't have to make that decision today, so we, I mean, we're gonna have a meeting here in about another two weeks, maybe we can get some more information and decide if we wanna pull the trigger on the ramp or not, and that'll give us a chance to look at some funding options.
I thought we came over here and asked you to, for sure.
Well, number two is the ramp, well, I, I'm not saying we don't do, but we don't have to make that motion today, like, we can wait two weeks to our next meeting and put that on the agenda and make that decision.
I would entertain the information that Comstock, uh, again, with your motion to include what their email indicated, that using some other subcontractors to lower that, that, uh, that minimum bid.
Right, so I would, I would, I guess my opinion, since we have a motion and a second, I think we should accept the base bid, and then we should just keep, I think we should pursue the second alternate, but we should, you know, see if we can look at other options, maybe there's just a variety, since we're deciding we're gonna do it, maybe the way we're gonna do it, maybe could change. I mean, there could be a couple different things, we could at least mull over, do something different with them, I don't know, but just, I would say for now, if it's still up for discussion, let's just keep discussing that, but go with the base bid, so if the project moving.
All right.
Is anybody coming with that? Okay, so, uh, we have a motion, a second, is there any more discussion on the approval of Comstock for the general construction? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Comstock's bid is approved, uh, next item would be the, uh, could be electrical. Um, also just remember that, that there are, there's basically two bids for that, and there's an electrical and fire alarm bid, so if you wanna make the motion to accept, because there's only two contractors, and they both bid both of them, so you're gonna pick one or the other essentially, so.
I make a motion to accept Rafter Electric, the way it looks to me, Mechanical and Alarm System.
Commissioner Mittery makes a motion to accept Rafter Electric's bid for twenty-six A and twenty-eight A, the electrical and the fire alarms. Is there a second to that motion? No second. Seconded by Commissioner Everly, is there any more discussion on the acceptance of Rafter Electric for the electrical and fire alarms? Portion twenty-six A and twenty-eight A. Not hearing any, I hope those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Rafter Electric's bid is accepted, and the last, of course, is the HVAC, and, uh, just remember that you are also going to want to, uh, decide if you wanna alternate number one.
With the HVAC.
Yeah, so if you're gonna make the motion, you need to, that motion should be decided, or, or I guess you could make a separate motion, but we have to decide on that today, whether or not, so. Just remember that according to motions, you don't have to amend motions and things like that.
And everybody is clear what alternate is, one?
Alternate one is the upgrade to the heating system.
Okay. But I just don't know, I'm not quite sure yet, but, um, I thought he was gonna do a little more checking, what's all right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it right now, and it's an upgraded model to the Trane, it's a Trane, it's just got higher output, kinda like Sheriff Sanders had mentioned, it's just got more heating output, more cooling output. It's both, both are Trane models, one is just a better heater model.
Yeah. So we should make a motion on accepting who we wanna accept and the alternate O-one, correct? So we know that there'll be an upgrade put in place.
I think part of that conversation, Commissioner Mittery, was that whoever the contractor, they will have to order those units, and there's a timeline there, so they need to know going forward too, what'll be ordered.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we should have two weeks yet to decide at the next meeting, if we can find more information on the efficiency of number one as opposed to that base, that number one, or, you know?
Right, yeah, I mean.
If it's gonna run cheaper over time, it's gonna pay for itself.
All right, well, I, I would say it's, it's kinda one of those deals, when you're, when you're going this far in, the, I, I, I would probably be in favor of the alternate, because, I mean, if it was fifty seven, fifty percent more, it'd be different, when you're talking of, you know, ten percent or less, five percent of the total project to go with an upgraded model, like I said, you're going through all this work, I, I would probably recommend going with the alternate number one too, at least doing it right, 'cause you know what happens? It's like we talked about with the roads, why didn't they go a little bit further, well, it was cheaper, well, dang it, no, it's not, like, I'm, so I, I guess if you're even entertaining that, the alternate is probably the best route to go, just in the general sense of.
Yeah.
I mean, it's obviously different enough that they bid it separately, so it's not, it's not like, oh, you're only getting a little bit better, it's a probably a pretty significant change, otherwise they wouldn't try to bid it separately, so, that'd be my opinion on that.
Well, that's what I think too, but then if we're gonna do it, then we might as well do alternate two right away too.
Yeah, but the, I mean, just to be clear, alternate number two is a total different contractor, a total different part of the work, and it could be done, you know, at a different timeline technically, I mean, a little, a month later, a couple of weeks later, and that one, I think we could do some research, and I mean, how big we want it, how different, if they're gonna do any, if they're gonna do a subcontractor, and, you know, I mean, that's something that, I mean, it sounds like Comstock's gonna be kinda handling, and then going through a subcontractor, not, not going through any of these bids, they're the only ones that bid alternate two.
Yeah.
So, that's not a decision we have to make today, that's something to think of, we could probably sit on that for two weeks, get some more information, you know, decide then, you know, we can have, you know, we can look at funding mechanisms and how we're gonna do it, so we don't, so, I think option, I mean, alternate number two is really not a lot to do with what we're talking about with number one, so.
So we want a motion for HVAC?
Yes.
Who would pick it for the contractor?
Yes.
And include the alternate one with the upgrade system?
If you wanna do alternate one, I would probably try and make that part of that motion, if you're ready.
I'll make a motion to accept Prairie Heating and the upgrade on the alternate one, O-one.
Okay, so Commissioner Mittery's motion is to accept Prairie Heating and Air's HVAC bid and the alternate number one.
Yep.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller seconds that motion, is there any more discussion on accepting Prairie Heating and Air's bid? Including alternate one? Not hearing any, I hope those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Prairie Heating's bid is accepted, and alternate number one is accepted. So is that what you're looking for, Comstock folks?
Yep.
Yes, all good?
Is there any other discussion pertaining to the courthouse renovation, any other things that came up, clarifications, questions? If not, we'll be meeting again in approximately two weeks, if you have anything, you're more than welcome to hit on the agenda for that, or any new information, changes, anything like that, more than welcome to, uh, and, uh, we can do it remotely, we might have to work on the audio a little bit again or decide, or, but yeah, you're more than welcome to call in like this, anytime.
Sound good?
Okay.
Thank you very much, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so next item on the agenda.
So you guys didn't do the fire alarm, you know, with the.
Yeah, we did, so Rafter Electric bid both, so we accepted both of theirs.
Oh, okay.
That was the way we were in the motion.
And then that one with, um, that Rafter that you accepted, what about the option, alternate one on that too, does include that in there, right? The ninety-five hundred?
Oh, there was an electrical upgrade in number one.
Oh, what was that about, I don't know.
Well, I'm sure there was an electrical upgrade, whatever they did for the heating, I'm sure there was an electrical upgrade too, so.
So we should probably, what?
Well, I, I would say we would probably just have another motion, since that wasn't a part of the original motion that we're going to. Since we accepted number one for Prairie Heating, we should probably accept number one.
On the upgrade.
Our low bidder did bid that part two, so I guess I would entertain a motion to accept alternate number one from Rafter Electric.
I'll make a motion with the Rafter Electric bid that was submitted and approved and accepted, to include alternate O-one.
Commissioner Mittery, Commissioner Mittery makes a motion to accept Rafter Electric's base bid and also alternate number one.
Yep.
Seconded by Commissioner Everly, is there any more discussion on the approval of alternate one by Rafter Electric? Not hearing any, I hope those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
We just need to make sure that Comstock is aware that. We just need to make sure that Comstock is aware that after they signed off, did you guys amend that?
Right, right, I'm sure that was a question we probably had, or same way, so.
I, I think my, my recollection from previous conversations with Comstocks and, and that when they did the walkthrough on the electrical was that some of the electrical panels need to be upgraded. One of them is, actually, I believe in the hallway, just outside my office, um, there's been kind of a recall in those. They recommend you get them out of there, uh, and upgrade those, uh, and so forth, they're hazard. So, and that goes back to the, to the general conversation. These are, these are things that have to be done sooner or later and, and the sooner we get this stuff done, it's better, so.
I haven't heard anything negative from people in the public. Everybody's just.
Yeah, I think.
People want courthouse upgrades.
And I think most people agree that when you come into the building and you take the time to really look around, you start seeing some of the problems that are here. If you're in and out and don't look around, you may not notice it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a nice building, needs to be renovated. I've been to a lot of courthouses and other places.
So when do they wanna start in that area?
They're looking at a start date in May, around the corner, and trying to wrap things up by September, tentatively.
Okay.
So.
That's why the decisions we made today are important.
Right, it's good for.
Absolutely, so. All right.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Next item on the agenda will be to appoint election inspectors for the twenty twenty-four primary and general elections. Marlon's recommends Terry McDonald in Hazleton City Hall, Deborah Schumacher at the courthouse, and Rosalind Meyer at the Shazzer Blue Room. Correct me if I'm wrong, and we're all people who've done it before?
Um, Deborah's gonna be doing it.
Okay.
Josh used to do that and he said he didn't wanna do it.
I'll make a motion to accept the three that are mentioned.
Commissioner Mittery makes a motion to accept Terry McDonald in Hazleton City Hall.
Yep.
Deborah Schumacher at the courthouse, and Rosalind Meyer at the Shazzer Blue Room.
Yes, all good, yep.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'd like to ask if they have to be residents of the county or not?
Well, you should, I don't know if you do or not, but I usually do.
Well, Rosalind is, Deborah Schumacher is.
Terry McDonald is. The hell is it?
Oh, she's.
Terry's family, I don't know if she lives.
You know, I always have her because she's, uh, auditor of Hazleton City. Um, I don't think you have to be a resident.
Okay, I'm just asking, so what about?
But they all are, correct?
No, well, Terry McDonald isn't, but she's the city auditor of the city, for Hazleton City, that's why she's been in that spot, so. We have a motion on that, is there a second to that motion?
No, second.
Now we have a second, so is there any more discussion on the election inspectors? I think the idea is also with Terry is she's obviously gonna be observing and taking care of the Hazleton City elections, so it's, she's working the election anyways, having a resident inspector.
Yeah, we got the, we have it all in the same ballot, but.
Yeah. So, is there any more discussion on the appointment of election inspectors for the twenty twenty-four primary and general election? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Not opposed? Motion passed. We'll just quick skip to the end for this last one here, raffle permit for Miss Rhodey and North Shore organization.
We sent it up to the Attorney General's office yesterday and they didn't see an issue with it.
Megan Pross is that the daughter to the guy that works for Camel Electric?
Wife.
Or the wife, okay.
So it's Miss Rhodey organization, they're just doing the, uh.
Oh, they're just supporting.
Just raffling out, it's a fundraiser for, um, support the organization there, five oh one C three.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Motion by Commissioner Mittery to accept the, uh, or approve the raffle permit for the Miss Rhodey and North Shore organizations, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Not opposed? Permit approved. All right, last item on the agenda will be the building permit for Myron Heilman to construct a thirty by forty-eight post screen building on lot ten of lot one A, Rudy Edition, section five, township one thirty, range seventy-nine. I mean, sue me, Myron.
Yes, thank, nice to meet you all.
The floor is yours, Myron, and I thank you for making time.
Um, it's really appreciated. And I'll tell you, I did watch the, it was second, um, video that was on YouTube. And I have to say that Commissioner Magrum, you had mentioned that is a rural, or excuse me, is it, uh, recreational? And I don't consider myself recreational. I am, I'm registered as, uh, residential. I know I can't vote in Emmett County, but I do consider myself a, uh, resident of Emmett County. Pay taxes and my home is on a foundation, that's not on it, so I'm there for the long run. That being said, I wanna thank Josh for representing what I wanted the previous meeting, a little nervous of studio. Um, so, I gave him some bad tools. Uh, what I didn't give him was the, what you see here is, uh, where the layout of the shop would actually go. Um, Mr. Mittery, Commissioner Mittery, you had made mention that why not just push the road out? Well, you can see that those two trees, those bigger trees, those are the last two trees of the original twelve they planted. Um, so I really don't wanna take those down. The yellow box, the yellow rectangle indicates the fifteen foot setback, okay? And, um, with the water level gone, it's not an issue now, but what I did have a point from, uh, my reckoning is building to put my, my son's pontoon in there now. But, uh, you can see that I come in from the north and going out towards the south and then backing straight in, um, is my goal, okay? Now, the blue rectangle is the location of the shop where I'd have to put it. Now, the old, I asked for a six foot setback. I did map it out, I put the stakes in the ground, ran some string, um, six might feel a little bit tight. I did, I am asking for a three foot, not saying I don't need it, but I'm asking for it, so I have a little more cushion. I can go out probably a little bit more, um, you know, to, to get, to meet my needs. Um, I'm not asking for anything that you guys haven't approved in the past. There has been a three foot setback, uh, approved in the past. Uh, my, my feeling is that there is no risk to any Emmett County resident, myself or anybody else, by allowing that three foot setback. The Corps doesn't care if you would, either, I've got the, the, uh, the message, not the message, but I got the brochure from the Corps that does right there, basically says, follow your local codes, but first and foremost, do not build or overhang county, or, uh, core property. Government managed property.
That's all core property on the west side there, right?
Everything to the south of me and to the west.
It's core.
Yes. Um.
Well, it's gonna be closest to the west side there.
Pardon?
It's gonna be right on the west side.
No, it's south. South side.
No, it's right on the south.
That's the south.
But that'd be the south side. And I did run, there are two core markers on the end of that red line. And I literally did run a string line. I had to get up pretty early to do it because there's no wind then. Um, and I ran it the whole distance and stayed the, the core edge and, and moved it out, so. That's the purpose for it, again, I'm not saying that I don't, I, I, I want three foot, I just, a little more cushion. Again, my, my request is not risk anything. Um, I think in the, the, by the April meeting, uh, I think there was a quote, that the odds of the county ever having core land like that are slim to none, so, um, that's my request. Again, I don't, listening to you guys and your struggles here with the, uh, building and the courthouse here, I'm willing to give you a hundred bucks, I know it's a drop in the bucket, but paying is many dollars. You know, and along with that, you know, the tax man will come, he will tax me on it, it's more revenue for Emmett County. Again, I don't have a problem telling you to pay in taxes.
Well, I guess, first off, like the, you know, saying that your lot is recreational, that, that wasn't an insult to your.
No, 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 I know, I know.
What I mean by that is that there are different setbacks depending on if you consider residential or recreational. And there's, there's lots of areas that are technically zoned, like ag and recreational, but if they're technically residential, others are residential.
No, and I, I wasn't.
Right, I just wanted to be clear with that, that was not like, ah.
They're not, you know, we've been coming down here and, like you said, my family's got de-creased down here. And, uh, the term weekenders has been tossed around, but you know what? I frequent the bar, I buy my beer, I grocery shop and, um, I do what I can, but.
Most of the full timers and cattails started as weekenders. And then eventually their property got nice enough, they decided they liked it there more than home, so.
Quite honestly, that, that, I mean, I love it, we love, and it's not just for me, it's my family and my.
I can see that is a pretty tight spot there, you don't have a lot of room in that, yeah?
Yeah, so, yeah, just to, had that tree, had I known, you know, fifteen years ago what it was gonna do, um, might be a different situation, but, you know, I can't see that far ahead. Um, it works out well, um, that's, that's my request.
And you can't put it against the house, can't be on that certain side, just because of the layout of the home inside, you don't wanna attach it?
Well, I can't because I, I have, I have boiler heat.
Okay.
And to attach to a, to the house means I'm basically gonna have to start busting to boiler line, you know, heating lines. Um, and then on the other side, I would have to move that other little garage slash slop, whatever you wanna call it. Um, it's just the way the lot was, you know, the, the original lot that pie shaped there was the edge of Rudy's first development. And I, I, excuse me, I contacted him and asked him if he would spread across over to the road to come up with the, I think, one point three nine meters. So, um, it's an odd shaped lot, unfortunately, I have no, no, really no other place to put it. Um, I come in from the south, I come in from the north, um, in the winter, I do keep the place heated, I take Camel Electric year round. Um, so, I do keep the place heated all year round, I do come down in the winter. Um, and that north, with the trees the way they are, the north entrance is usually closed up. So I have to go through the south.
Well, there is a provision in the ordinance book, it would be on page thirty-four, it is, uh, it's, uh, item three under article nine, anybody following on it? Uh, minimum front, side, or rear setbacks from lot lines in any district may be less than those stated if existing adjacent similar uses are less than the required minimum, in which case the minimum setback shall be the average setback of existing adjacent surrounding uses. So Josh, in your opinion, are there other uses in that area that are inside that setback?
In my opinion, yes, I can't tell you exactly how far they are from the line, like said, I'm not.
Mm-hmm.
Certified surveyor. Um, there are a couple that are at least twelve feet or less, I can tell you that for a fact.
Mm-hmm.
Um, whether it's one's six and one's eighteen and what, they're twenty-four feet apart with a boundary line between them. So that means at least one is twelve feet or less away from the side, similar to his. And I'm calling that a side, you know, um, to give him the benefit of the doubt of that weird shaped lot. Um, yeah, there are some that are, uh, really close to the core boundary. You know, are adjacent, like, these guys are really close. That line could be shifted here, but this is twenty-four feet apart of these two structures here.
Right.
So.
But, I mean, 'cause another, not to interrupt you, I guess, but the, the other question and the reason we were trying to differentiate, differentiate between residential, recreational, in a resi- a residential or commercial districts, uh, the side yard setback is a minimum of ten feet.
Yeah, that's with public water, I'm sorry, if you don't get that.
If it's not.
But public water or public sewer.
If it's not served by public sewer water, then that's where the side yard is fifteen foot. And you're considering that side yard, right? So that's the word of discussion is.
Yes.
Do you have rural water in your place or do you have a well?
I have water.
Because I would argue that that's public water.
That's public.
I don't have public sewer.
Right, now, nobody does out there, but I, I'm actually saying in this case, the not, the having public water would actually give you a.
I know, I know what you're saying, is that.
I mean, 'cause that's where, we're going now from fifteen feet to ten feet.
But then you look at a ten feet, it says we're used to serve by both public water and sewer, not or. So, he doesn't have public sewer, so we can't use the ten.
Yeah, it does say and, not or.
And it's confusing because the next one says or.
Right.
And I know this definitely needs to be.
I don't think this fits all them definitions, 'cause I think the idea of that is more so like residential, commercial, they're expecting subdivisions, which more likely would have public sewer.
Yeah.
These are all rural lots anyway, but, I mean, so you're splitting hair on setbacks on that, basically, um. I guess the only concern that I would have is kinda like what we stated before though, is I, you know, I, I went on the Corps' website just like you did, it didn't give you any information essentially, which means there really is no setback, in my opinion. Because it didn't say like, oh, we have a minimum twenty-five feet and all that, but.
Right.
The only concern I have with allowing a variance like that, I did, I did say this, and this is more so just for the sake of discussion, I had it out there, is that under unauthorized uses and activities, they call it what's called Title Thirty-six under their federal code of regulations, which is, uh, destruction, injury, defacing, removal, or any alteration to public property. And then what they consider that would be anything, uh, dumping garbage or grass clippings, mowing, grazing livestock, gardening, timber cutting, spraying a herbicide or pesticides, placing unattended personal property on public property, construction of buildings, roads, fences, ponds, or any other facilities, replacement of fill or landscaping, septic tanks, drain fields, utility lines or irrigation systems, or planting trees, shrubs, or other vegetation. That would be my only concern because when you're that close, you could incidentally do some of those things, so. I'm not saying that's a reason to confirm or deny, but just to be fair, I, I just.
No, and I understand that, and I did take that into consideration. And the only thing, and as you can see, I'm pretty tight. Um, I don't litter, I take pride in my property.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm pretty tight on the core line, I, you know, there's a, there's a little spot on the backside that I, uh, go past the core mark. Um, they have never said anything, they have never approached me on anything, uh, I believe that I'm a good neighbor to them. And I'm not going to, I, it would, it wouldn't be my best interest to do anything that would just bring the core, you know, visits every, so that's not my.
So what's the minimum you think you can get by with that?
You know, I, if you, I haven't staked out, take the blue square, and I can move it, I have probably a foot and a half, you know, where it meets the driveway there, I have a foot and a half, um, because I did literally stake it out square. And then I can move that direction, yeah, so actually it'd be more of four and a half, maybe five feet, you know?
I'd like to go back to some, was it the west a little bit?
Can you come back west?
If I do that, then I, well, again, I don't wanna go too close to trees because that tree, right there, they're gonna get big.
Yeah, but I mean, if you go back just say ten feet, five, ten feet, would that be, and then stay over a little more, wouldn't that work?
Yeah, it's, I, then I would end up with a problem because I'd end up with more fill. Because there is a slight little grade, if you look at the front, the street view again, you'll see that the far, when you get back towards the middle, and to come up with that grade, I'm going to end up having to, um, do exactly what Commissioner Magrum suggested, is start putting fill in the core property. Here, I can get by with the, the least, less fill to come up with a level lot. And to go back another ten feet, it would put me, um, I'm sorry, I got the, I got a little. To go back another ten feet, I would just about be to that tree and that's, to me, that's pretty close to the, just to, to the house. I mean, I know it's a metal building, but I still wanna create a buffer between me and, and the home.
So you're saying four or five feet would be the minimum?
Four or five feet, um.
To the west?
If I go six feet, I'd go with a, I mean, and I don't want, because I've got partially built and purchased, but I don't want to go with a smaller because, um, I gotta grab, I gotta, excuse me, I gotta put it somewhere and, uh. I, again, I, I, I'm not. There, uh, uh, there was a, a previous setback that did meet, that did, uh, I don't wanna say. That was not as clean as this, that was a.
I guess my, I just, my biggest concern is the core land. I guess my, I just, my biggest concern is the core land, I just, that's, you know, three feet away from the property is, is just, is just tough to get anything done without eventually landing on that property, and so what I, I guess what I, I have no problem with you wanting to put a building, I really don't.
I know, I know.
And I, I, I think if there was some kind of official document saying that the Corps doesn't have a setback, and that it's not a big deal, I think that would totally change my mind.
I, I just have it.
I mean, I understand you went on the website, I get that, but you go and talk to one Corps official or the other, everybody has different interpretations of this.
That's why they put it in writing, so people let me have a black and white. Um, I, because I have had Corps people come up to me and say, you know, you, I, I had a doc, part of a boat doc on the core property, and he said, come up to me, and he says, hey, mind moving that, I said, absolutely not. But, that's why, if you go to that Q and A on the core, um, it basically tells you that's doing overhang, and I'm not, I'm not saying I'm gonna build it right there. Because quite honestly, I'm not putting, um, at this point, I'm not putting windows on the south side. Because I can't see that, to go with a fifteen foot setback, the more I go, the more of my property is just useless to me, because I can't do anything on that side of the building. I can't put a garden, the sun will burn it up, I can't see anything that I might park there, so, it's just a fifteen foot setback, which is basically about seven hundred and what, twenty square feet of my, of my lot. And as you can see, every square foot is essential, but, I don't have any, my, my, my issue is, or my, my, I don't wanna have an issue with the core. You know, I don't, and that's, if I thought that I couldn't do it in the six feet or less, then I wouldn't even be here. But, after I've staked it out, um, solid, I would have to put in fill for grade. I'm confident, anyone who'd come up, are welcome to look, but I'm confident I can do it.
How deep of fill would you need towards your?
To go towards the back, right where it is now, I would probably be looking with a four inch slab, looking about probably six inches. Six inches in that corner, because as you can see, it just goes down, um, six inches in the far, in the corner by the core. So that's, you know, we're talking six inches, I can grade that out in about, in four feet or less. And on the south side, it's, I would just rock it all the way, I mean, I'm no sense in mowing it, I don't have to, but, if the farther I go back, I'm looking at closer to a foot, which then is, it would be tough.
The peak of the roof, does it run east, east and west then?
It would run, yes, yes.
Then you'd have to put rain gutters on, so that water would not erode your fill?
No, I don't have to, I'm not planning on putting rain gutters in, but it won't, it won't fill, because it'll be rock.
Okay.
Rock with, uh, uh, at least a three mil government surplus as a five foot plastic that I would probably use, um, as an underlay.
So the, so the overhang is not gonna hang on that?
There's not gonna be an overhang on there.
Yes, I'm okay, I'm okay with it. I just think I'm okay with it.
And those boundaries are, or those corners are clearly marked from the core, and it matches exactly with my digital map that they gave me down there, so I don't see an issue ever with the boundary, then arguing that, you know.
Just anything, you know, the, if you look at the, the line, the core brass is literally laying on my, I, but I, again, I'm not a big fan of mowing, I take care of my property, I take care of my lawn, but I don't wanna mow anymore in the head.
So how would you put gravel along there if you couldn't go in the core with a wheelbarrow then?
Yeah, I would have, yeah, and I wouldn't have to any, um, as far as you, I, I can walk on the core, I can take a wheelbarrow on the core, I'm not gonna disrupt it. But, yeah, I would just take a wheelbarrow and just dump it, and I'd get the gravel locally.
They're that tough going on their property like we're scared?
I, and again, I haven't had an issue, uh, with them, just when my dock was on the lot. My neighbor and I did, he did get a dock, or a dock for next, when the water is up. Um, so we do, we've got a dock, and it's not like they're, they're enemy number one, um, they just, there's things you can't do, and, and I don't do them, so.
It's supposed to be a lot, well, I'd be able to issues or whatever else, you know, I suppose.
Yeah.
Put a dock on their land, something happens, and.
Yeah, it's, I think if they issue you the permit, then you have the right, I mean, you can do that, then they allow you to mow certain areas, and.
Well, I just wanna remind everybody that, I mean, when you issue a variance, it doesn't just go with Myron, it goes with the property. So it's, I mean, Myron made me an exceptional caretaker of it, it might not always be him.
Well, I can promise you this, Commissioner Magrum, as long as I'm alive, there isn't gonna be anybody else owning it, and as long as my son is alive, there isn't gonna be anybody else owning it.
Right, but that variance goes basically to the end of time, century, because it's gonna be a variance for that structure, I mean, the, the reason why I bring it up is because the term variance gets thrown around, like, oh, we can just do it, and I, I don't disagree with that in a lot of ways, 'cause there's a description of a variance here, it basically says the relaxation of zoning ordinances and in setbacks, so you don't cause unnecessary or undue hardship. I don't disagree with that, but the one thing we have to remember when issuing a variance, and this isn't to say one way or the other, it's just to remind you, is you're accepting some responsibility, because you're essentially telling that person that they can build closer than what the original rules said. If there's any kind of a scenario down the road where, let's just say, there's refuse behind that building, and then we tell them to clean it up, and then by cleaning it up, they went on the core land, now the core land wants it, maybe, well, the county gave you a permit, they're responsible, I just.
Well, no, 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 that's, you're not responsible, it says right here that you may offer a variance.
Mm-hmm.
You may, it's at your discretion, it's my responsibility to make sure that I keep it clean. They're not gonna come after you, they're gonna come after me.
I, I know it sounds that easy, and that's the common sense answer, I don't disagree with it.
We can make this as difficult.
Yes.
As, as we can, but.
I agree.
In, in a, in a nutshell, um, I'm gonna leave you with this little bit of information. I did a search on the MS County website. And of all the minutes posted, going back to January of twenty twenty-two, there were ninety-six permits to erect a building, um, issued. Three of them were with variances, every one of them was passed except mine. Now, the other issue, the other property with a variance, is not, like I said, is not this simple. It is close, they are close to buildings. So if the zoning order says you may issue me a permit, yet you refuse to, what am I supposed to believe? What, what, what's my thinking, is that you have the right to do it? I make my pledge to honor the core property, or, um, honor your, uh, issuance of the permit. But when it comes right down to it, my permit's the only one that, with the variance, that was denied. And I have to ask why, is it just because you can deny it? And that is not, in my opinion, I do pay taxes, I'm willing to pay more taxes on, on my improvements. And in a county that is looking for funds, I can tell you that the people I have visited with, the first thing they said, and I'll be completely honest, is why did you even bother applying for a permit? And I said, because I wanted to stay on the up and up. So denying me the permit, when there's really no reason to deny it, is gonna tell other people who want to build and create a tax revenue for MS County to say, no, I'm not, I'm not here to. I'm on the up and up. I'm not violating anything, you guys have the right to say, yes, you can do this. I'm just asking you for the right.
I would like to see at least a six foot.
I, I could, with the original one, I could do six foot.
I guess that's what they have variances for, but I know, we had trouble with variances before, but I guess I just think in this situation, I mean, you're kind of crowded there, I can understand where we could grant the variance there, and we'd be okay, like all the others sometimes, we did before, but I mean.
Sometimes you're forced to do what you gotta do.
Yeah, I mean, and sometimes.
Just the way you did to set that home there, yeah, somebody else did.
Well, actually, I did, but at the time, um, did I know that I was gonna need a shop? No, I didn't. Um, there's a lot of things I would do differently, you know, especially, you know, maybe with trees. But Commissioner Magrum, on the, the second, or the April second meeting, you talked about just staying consistent, and I don't understand why consistency, in this case, means let's grant everybody their permit except me. And I, and I, it's nothing personal, I just wanna build a shop and pay my taxes.
Well, I mean, the consistency part of it also comes in, but I don't think we've approved the one variance, uh, since, uh, we tried the fence line variance, which was a pretty eye-opening, educating experience. So that would be one reason why I probably changed my opinion on variances.
Well, I guess, like, like some of the other variances we had, that maybe we granted, or should maybe granted, maybe the guy had all kinds of room that he had in the yard, and we just said, well, okay, we'll give him a variance, put it right up against the fence and whatever, but he had plenty of room, but he doesn't have a lot of room there, so that's where I can see, well, maybe we should just grant this, because he doesn't have a lot of room for anywhere else.
And I'm not a sloppy person.
And some of those other people that were probably granted variance, well, they just wanted in the corner of their lot, they wanted as far back as they could, and they could have probably put it. We probably should have been more consistent that way and said, you know, stay back. But we didn't, we just gave them a variance, because that's what they wanted, and now this one here, I can see, it's just like when, when we did shake bars down there with the grain guns, well, you had a wall in the road after years, how are you gonna set one back in now, you know what I mean? You, but that'd be after, you have to look at the situation, and.
I guess in my opinion, I don't, and like you said, nothing personal, but I, I see two different parts of the lots where I think this building could get built, that's just my opinion, I feel like on the front part, in, in, around the driveway is an area where a building could get built, or behind the house is an area.
I can't even, I, like you said, in the winter, when the wind comes from the northwest, and we get snow, I've got four feet of snow in that opening. And, you know, it's a post frame, so structurally, I don't want that snow on our roof.
Right, I mean, I just, I'm just trying to interpret the rules a little stricter, I've probably been a little bit lax on variances, or had a different opinion of them, I mean, when it comes to undue or unnecessary hardship, I mean, one or two trees to remove, or a road to remove, I, I mean, those are things people do all the time to meet setbacks and things like that, I don't feel like, like, that's a undue burden, and on top of that, I, I know one of the variances that we did accept, there was already a structure there, and then the structure got removed, and there was still a foundation, and they wanted to build on that foundation, well, that's kind of an understanding of like, well, there already is something there, there's no structure already here that was approved once before, that you're trying to rebuild, and now we're forcing you to move it and it's tripping, you know, and that, that would be totally undue, you know.
I do recall, during the minutes of that meeting, that that gentleman said, if he had over, had to do it over again, he would start fresh, he would move things. And I'm saying the exact same thing, if I had to start fresh, I would do things different, but I can't.
I know, but, I mean, you are starting fresh, there's no building there, like, that's, I, I, I mean, the understanding that I have of the variances and the ordinances is, you know, I mean, is this really undue hardship by you having to, I mean, move a driveway a little bit and, and a, and a tree or something? Like, I mean, that's just an opinion, I'm not, and I'm not saying that that's not easy, I'm not, I'm not trying to make this personal, Myron, I, it's not, it's not it at all.
In order to stay with your variance, which at your discretion, you can offer me, you are creating undue hardship on me by telling me I should pull that tree and move my driveway. Why, I mean, here I had to chase away to keep those trees alive?
But if that's the case, I mean, the, the same deal would apply that if, if, if we're strict on our setbacks and following the rules, and everybody sees that, and they're not gonna file for permits because of that, then, then there's no point in having a permit process, or a variance process, or a setback process anyway, so, I mean, this is the process we have that's adopted. Trying to stay consistent and follow it, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, uh.
I will refer back to that, you have the right, you can, you may, at your discretion, offer me the building permit, you can, you can, you can, you can.
Right, I'm only speaking for myself on this, it's just my opinion on it, and I, I'm just, I mean, I see.
But I don't want your lobbying against me to sway the other board.
I'm not lobbying against you, I'm lobbying in defense of the ordinance, that's the two different things, and that's, I mean, that's a mistake that happens a lot in here, is the difference of opinion is automatically interpreted, interpreted as personal, and that's absolutely not the case, I mean, I.
I'm not, I'm not, you broke my septum.
I know who you are, Myron, and like I said, I worked with Dean for years at Western Steel, and I, yeah, we know Dean well, I, it's not personal, my, I.
I didn't take it personally.
I understand completely what you're trying to do here, I do that, I, but my responsibility is not just to Myron Homan, but to everybody in the area, and I know there are properties that probably don't follow the ordinance, I know there's properties that probably haven't filed for a permit. That being said, this is the discussion at the moment. I see a property that's well over an acre, right, that's the green department, it's one point three, one point five. I feel like there are other areas where it could be built, where we didn't have to grant a variance, and if that's the truth, then that's the option that I would support, I.
Okay, so, other than the front, where would you suggest?
Well, like I said, without any measurements or anything of that, it looks to me like that square in the back behind the house would, would work somehow, I mean, yes, it probably has to do with.
Or septic, or septic field.
Well, I mean, those are things to take into consideration too, I mean, the other thing about it too, is does the building have to be that size, 'cause granting a variance just so someone can build the size shop they want, rather than the size that fits the lot, I mean, you could go into cities and towns everywhere and be like, well, I need a variance so I can build this giant coal building, well, sometimes you don't have the property to build that building, and that's just, I mean, these are just conversations that are all the reason why these ordinances exist, though, I don't disagree with you, we can absolutely grant a variance, I don't disagree.
The part of the reason for that size is, my son's pontoon is twenty-four foot, we count the motor, and the tommy of the trailer, we're looking at thirty-five feet. And then I've got my stuff, hailstorm, what am I gonna do? I can't get nothing in there, my little garage there.
Can I just food for thought, and I'm not picking on you, or trying to change your thought process?
No, no, I understand.
That building to the north, right, the littler building?
Right.
Could that be moved over to here? And Boris Lab would take this building and set it to the north? And fit there more appropriately, and just food for thought, just by looking at.
I'll, I'll piggyback on that comment, in my opinion, that would be an unnecessary undue hardship, like, if, if you're pertaining to it, like, that's where, I see where you're coming from, but that's where, if you're gonna weigh those, I would be in favor of a variance versus forcing you to move a garage, like, that's where I'm at, I'm not, I'm not dead set against this building. I, I just, I, I, moving a building, I feel, right, I, I don't, what you said is perfect, but that's where I feel like that's where this comes into play, where it's like, that's asking a lot for someone to do. But, I mean, as far as the move, the removal of a tree and the diverting of a driveway, to my mind, I, I, that's, the question is, is that, is that worthy enough to consider a variance, that's the main question.
Okay, so.
And the only reason I made that remark is because you said you made mistakes in which you could redo it.
Right.
And we all do it, you know?
And to be, to, to that, behind there, uh, there's, you can't see it, but there's a small, there's a clean out, you pumped my septic tank once.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be too, too close to.
The septic.
The septic, the tank. Would I do, would I, could I cut down trees and put it over there? Yes, I could do that. Um, but I've got a blank canvas right there. And I'm not asking for the world, I'm just asking for a variance to, to put a shop up, and like I said before, hail, you guys know that the weather changes just like that. You know, a lot of times I've tried to get my pickup underneath those trees just to stop the hail, you know, prevent hail. Um, I have no place to go with that type of stuff, and to move the driveway over a little bit, again, there's a grade from the road out to there, my granddaughter takes her little bike, goes up to the road, and rides down.
So what was the minimum for the Chicago, you think, to buy it?
I figured if, if I, with a three foot, it's sitting at three foot right now, um, and I got, I got about a foot and a half, and I could go two feet, so I could do the five foot, if I had to go four. five-foot, if I had to go four, uh, six-foot, then I'd go back another foot.
So five foot?
But five foot, six foot, I mean, I'm still gonna stay off the core property.
I would make a motion to grant a five-foot variance there.
So Commissioner Everly makes a motion to grant Myron Heilman a building permit with a five-foot variance from the Corps of Engineers property line, does that make sense to Josh? Do you think that, that's the proper terminology over there?
Yeah.
Because that's the only real property line in question, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Five-foot variance from the core land, right?
Yes, so Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve a building permit from Myron Heilman with the, with a five-foot variance from the Corps of Engineers property.
Second.
Is there a second, second by Commissioner McCary, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, posed, motion passed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good work.
Now the work starts.
Myron, this is the only thing to add to it, this was a good process, I feel like you vetted your variance, and so, I wasn't, I, I'm not trying to defend my goal, what I'm saying is that five feet is, is, I think is reasonable enough, you could get something behind there and not have to inter impact with the core land, and on top of that, I mean, you proved that your sewer system's on the backside, you might have had an issue with a setback off the road, I don't have a problem with that variance, and I felt like three feet was pretty close, and you vetted all your other things, so...
Yeah, and I, again, three feet was, was, it would have been somewhere between three and five and a half.
Mm-hmm.
Um, until I actually get the, the batter boards up and, you know, things like that.
Sure.
And my string lines, I, I did, all I did was measure off the core, stayed, that was the most critical part, was to stay off the core, away from a certain length, and then get everything squared on there, and so I could see what the footprint was gonna look.
When no one else lived in there, you're not impacting anybody else's home, the only thing I would do is extra caution to you, is stay off that land as much as you can, just because you don't know you have a problem with the core till you have a problem with the core.
Well, to be honest with you, they, they, I don't want to say, I don't want to make you this a bad guy, they, did I have issues with them? I've never really had issues, other people have, but you can see that I, I'm not, I don't want more than, I don't want what's not mine.
You see, the thing with the core today, there's this guy that's in charge of next week, this guy resigns and dies, and there's a new guy, and it totally changes.
And, and they, they look at the, the manual, and, and, you know...
So I mean, just to be clear, though, is that, I mean, you're accepting that responsibility of being closer to the core, then we're okay, just so we're fair and sound, so...
Absolutely, and I, um, I'm, I'm not here to say, well, they, they gave it to me, I'll take responsibility for what I do.
Okay, fair enough, well, we'll tell it right up on the agenda.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You don't bring the original?
Do you ever take a motion here during this special meeting?
I'll bring the original.
Meeting's adjourned.
Yeah.
All good.
Okay, um, yeah, and then, will there just be a stipulation out there saying that I've got...
Yeah, I think that just goes along with, I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
So, Josh?
Wants to make notes on it.
Josh, I'm gonna sign this building permit, but are you gonna include?
See, you got, did you get the one I printed you yesterday? I mean, here's the original one, but I'll make a note on there, the five-foot.
Here, can I, can I, well, I've worked...
Do you want the original one, then?
Sure. Can I take, Marshall, ask for the three-foot, change it to a five-foot initial?
Well, we just, we need to have some kind of documentation attached to it that we approve that.
I think we should have Joe check the variance.
Sure.
Yeah, because they'll type up an official's name.
Okay, well, so, I'm not going to...
I have, because I gave you a copy, this is the one he actually signed, so you can use this one, because I gave you one, he emailed you.
Right.
So it's not the...
I have the original one, then I have the other one you gave me.
And you still have a check?
Just use the, this one.
Yeah, the check is here.
Yeah, and use that check, though.
Can I cross this out on this little map?
Yeah, that's fine.
Three, and put five in the initial?
Sure.
And then you can send that one, then, I think we should have Joe check the variance.
Yeah.
Well, we should have something attached to it, that, and maybe even a little piece of the minutes or something like that, just, twenty years from now, when someone questions that there should be a cop, like, when these decisions are made, like, there should be like a little page of the minutes, and that way you don't have to dig into the minutes someday to be like, when did that, 78, really, it should be like page two of the minutes or whatever, this is where the motions and the, you know...
Because right now I have copies of permits, but like, I wanna look at those three variances, I'm like, I don't have that on me, so...
We know that variance that was granted to Melvin Whining back then, typed up.
Right, I'm, I have no, I think Joe should type in the variance.
Did we, Joe?
Yeah.
Everybody laughs.